Good evening and welcome to the November tenth, two thousand and twenty-five regular meeting of the Chandler City Council. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Clerk, please take the role.
Mayor Hartke.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
Here.
Councilmember Encinas.
Here.
Councilmember Poston.
Here.
Councilmember Orlando.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good. Thank you. Our invocations will be led tonight by Stu Bruner from Pace Church, and our Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Encinas.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. "Lord God, Creator of heaven and earth and all of its fullness, rightful owner of all you've made, and who sustain everything you've made, who give life and breath to all things. As your ambassador, I call upon you, whom the nations are as a drop in the bucket, Isaiah says, who sets the boundary of nations and determines their time of existence, who ordains governmental authority, who graciously established self-government in this great nation." Lord, I thank you for the blessings that you've given us in this great nation, the liberties secured for us by so many people before us who've sacrificed daily for our freedom, especially our veterans. Lord, we lift them to you at this time. Thank you for our leaders in government who serve the people, whom you have placed at the federal level, the state level, the county level, Lord, and municipal level as well. Would you bless them for their willingness to serve and to lead? You direct us in your word to pray for all who are in authority, and so I ask you for wisdom and guidance for our government leaders at every level. And I commit the men and women of this council charged with governing the city of Chandler into your hands, Lord. Ask that you would work in and through them tonight and throughout their tenure, provide them with the strength and wisdom to make the decisions that they're faced with. We know you alone give significance to our work on this earth, and so I call on you to prosper their efforts individually and collectively, to let your favor rest upon them, and give permanence, Lord, to what they do. Fill them with your grace and peace. Supply every single thing they ask. Thank you, Lord, for the confidence we have in approaching you through your son and the assurance that when we ask, you hear. So bless now this meeting of the Chandler City Council. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor, for your words. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which is founded, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice
Thank you, Mr. Bruner. Thank you, Councilmember Encinas. Our scheduled public appearances, and we've got a few tonight, I'd like to All right, we have some service recognition. City Manager, Acting City Manager.
Mayor and Council, I'd like to invite Jeremy Abbott from Public Works and Utilities down, and also call down Jesus Ruiz for ten years of service. Come on down, Jesus.
Thank you, John. So, Jesus Ruiz is joined by his wife Denise and his two children, Isaiah and Samantha. This month, we're proudly celebrating Jesus' tenure milestone with the city of Chandler. Jesus began his career in November of two thousand and fifteen as utility systems technician one with the Water Distribution Division, where he quickly demonstrated strong technical skills and commitment to excellence. In August of two thousand and sixteen, he transitioned to wastewater and moved to the Airport Water Reclamation Facility as a utility mechanic, where his reliability and problem-solving skills stood out. By December of that same year, Jesus was promoted to Senior Utilities Mechanic, and then in September of two thousand and seventeen, advanced to his current role Senior Utility Mechanic, CDL. Jesus holds ADQ certifications in water distribution and in wastewater collections, as well as a Mobile Crane Certification with the National Commission for Certification of Crane Operators. Jesus and his family love the outdoors. Their number-one hobby by far is hunting big game, followed by traveling and visiting every amusement park possible. Throughout his ten years of dedicated service, Jesus has been a key contributor to Team Chandler, ensuring critical water and wastewater infrastructure runs safely and efficiently. His expertise, teamwork, and positive attitude make him an invaluable asset to our organization. So, congratulations, Jesus, on this outstanding of achievement. We appreciate you.
Mayor and Council, next up, I'd like to ask our Fleet Director, Mike Hollingsworth, to come on down and introduce to us Juan Bedari for fifteen years of service. Come on down, Juan.
Mayor and Council, I'm pleased to recognize Juan Bedari for his fifteen years of dedicated service for the city of Chandler Fleet Services Division. Juan, joining our team in two thousand and ten as a senior fleet technician after spending five years with the city of Gallos, and we won't hold that against him. He made the move to Chandler seeking a better opportunity to support and raise his family. In two thousand and twenty-four, Juan was promoted to Lead Technician, a reflection of his skill, dedication, and leadership. Juan's professional accomplishments include an ASE Master Technician Certification, and if you know, that's not an easy certification to obtain. It's very challenging, and completed specialized training with General Motors for BMW motorcycles, equipping him to maintain a wide variety of vehicles, even enough to restore his nineteen eighty-four Cadillac. Outside of work, Juan's devotion to his family, wife, daughter Camilla, and son Juan Carlos II, is evident in his positive supportive nature. Juan, your professionalism, I'm sorry, professionalism, skill, and heart have made a lasting impact on the city of Chandler and all of us here. Congratulations on fifteen years of service. Thanks, Juan.
Mayor and Council, our last service award, I would like to ask Assistant Chief Perez to come down, and fittingly, we are going to recognize Tyler Service for his fifteen-year service award. Well timed.
Mayor and Council, I'd like to introduce to you Tyler Service for his fifteen years of service. Congratulations on fifteen years of service, outstanding service. Your dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the community exemplify what it means to wear the badge with honor. Throughout your career, you've served with distinction, represented in the department as a proud member of our honor guard, educating and mentoring youth as a school resource officer, and empowering others through your work as a RAD instructor. Your voice has also become a source of pride for the department, inspiring crowds. Have you sung the national anthem at professional events with the same passion that you bring to your service. Your leadership, integrity, and compassion have left a lasting mark on both your peers and the community, and reaching this milestone reflects years of hard work, sacrifice, and unwavering dedication. So, congratulations, Tyler, on fifteen remarkable years. You've truly embodied the spirit of service and made your department and community proud. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move up an item on the season of giving, so we can clear off that table. There we go. Season of giving. If we can have Trinity Donovan come on up. Trinity's got some special information to, as we enter into this holiday season. Ascend is a critical partner of ours, providing food, shelter, rent, and utility assistance for our community. And Councilmember Poston, I know that you've been working with Trinity and Ascend to help meet the increased needs in our community. Can, would you like to share anything?
Absolutely. So, first off, thank you for joining us tonight and being a partner in this. I just wanted to say also thank you for the city staff because the city of Chandler, as always, stepped up, and I know the community will as well. And we're doing a couple of things this year in that we are trying to bring the food drive to the community as opposed to coming here, you know, having people come to us. So, all of our public events, all of our big special events, we have so many amazing events during the season. Many of them, most of them, are free, and so we're actually having Ascend bring out food boxes to those events, so like Wolfstock this weekend, all the sorts of great things. So, also, thank you to our fire department for allowing boxes in each and every one of our fire stations, and there's a fire station in every neighborhood. So, we're making it really easy on you this year. So, what I thought I might do is we'll bring this gorgeous box up there. It looks great this year. And then I was going to let Trinity maybe talk a little bit about their most needed items that we have on display, and I want to thank also Mayor and fellow council members for doing some donations. I think we have plenty coming, whether it's food, some of it's cash, which goes really far for food, but I'm going to hand it over to the expert now.
Great. Well, thank you, Councilmember Poston. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, other council members, and thank you to the city staff. We have such a generous community, and we're so grateful for that. Everyone has a time in their life when they're in need, and so I love that our community helps to support our neighbors in need. We saw a huge increase in need last Thanksgiving. We increased our food boxes last year for Thanksgiving from over six hundred food boxes to over a thousand, and we're seeing up to twenty-five new people per day now, this, in this month, last week, of people coming for the first time to the food bank. And so that need has really increased this November as well. So, we love the community supporting us and other groups in the community. So, you'll see some, thank you for those who donated already, some of those most needed items, canned fruit, vegetables, canned meats. Peanut butter is a great source of protein and really helpful. Some of those items, like those fruit snacks, are great for families, as well as soups and pastas and those shelf-stable items for, for families in need. Oh, yeah, yes, thanks. So, also, flip-top cans can be really helpful, both for families who may have parents who are working and children who need to make their own food, as well as people that we serve who do not have a home, so they don't have a can opener. So, that can be really, really helpful. Any food is great for us, as well as financial contributions, which can help us fill in the gaps. And there are QR codes on these food boxes, as well as on these posters. You'll see a QR code that can get you to places where you can support people in the community during this time.
Thank you, Trinity. And I did just want to give one other kudos to Ascend. There are other places where you can donate food, and we certainly don't want to interfere with that, but the group and our Neighborhood Services led this along with Trinity and many of our local groups, and Ascend went ahead and took the lead, and I think some of the other food banks in town decided to let Ascend take the lead, which means they're putting in the work of bringing these food boxes out, picking them up, but they are sharing with the other food banks in town. So, I just want to make sure that it's not just Ascend. There are other needs, but you are working in conjunction with them. Did I get that right, or is there anything you should add? Okay. Well, thank you. So, we'll go ahead and put this away so we can have a clean table for the rest of the night. Thanks again, Trinity.
Thank you, Councilmember Poston, for bringing that to us. There were peanut butter dog treats in there, too. My dog would like that. Next up, we would like to call up Nick Ariola and his family as a Community Hero Award. Nick. This evening, we're proud to recognize an extraordinary individual whose courage and compassion embody the very best of our community. Mr. Nick Ariola, am I saying that right? Ooh, recipient of the Community Hero Award. Nick is an emergency room nurse by profession, dedicated to caring for others in their most vulnerable moments. But one early morning this past October, Nick's heroism extended far outside the walls of the hospital. Around four AM, driving home from a twelve-hour shift, Nick noticed smoke and flames rising from a house in our city. While most of us might have simply called for help, Nick did what true heroes do. He acted. He pulled over, he banged on the door of the burning house, awakened a family of five, the Cuzada's family, giving them a chance to escape. And because of Nick, a family is alive today, and we are reminded of the profound power and importance of looking out for one another. So, Nick, on behalf of the city of Chandler, our residents, and all of us who have gathered here today, we thank you. You're the kind of person that we are proud to call a role model, whether you feel that way when you look in the mirror or not. It's a great privilege to present to you this Community Hero Award, and thank you for reminding us that one person's bravery can change everything. Would you like to say anything?
First, I'd like to thank the mayor, the city, for recognizing me for this. It's, it's kind of weird being called a hero. I don't really feel like a hero, but I would like to thank my parents are here today, and I got one friend from work here today, and I would like to thank them. They're the ones that raised me to be able to act. I really feel like I was here at the right place at the right time and was able to act, and that kind of goes deep, and I think it's just because of them. And that's all I did. I did, I feel like I did what everybody would do, but some people are saying I wouldn't do that. But again, thank you, guys. And I would like to also thank EMS, the city PD and fire that showed up. I cannot believe how fast they were. It was absolutely amazing. We worked with them in the medical side, in the hospital, in the emergency department, but to see them go from not being there to being there was just absolutely amazing. I really think they, they kind of were the true heroes in the thing because they pretty much saved the entire building, and gives me goosebumps thinking about it, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Encinas, for bringing this up for us to, no, we're going to take a photo with you. Don't go anywhere.
Mayor, the, Mayor, Mayor, the family that was in, the family that was a part of that wreck is here as well. Can they come up and take a picture? Juan and
Would you guys like to join us? The other family, Cuzadas?
Yes, their parents are here. Come on up.
How about your family? You can use this for your Christmas photo. I heard her. All right. Yeah, then you can photo me out, and you do have a good Christmas. All right, do I get some high fives? All right, our next one is very exciting, too. Recognition for the Chandler Chamber of Commerce, Outstanding Program of the Year, and Industry Leader of the Year. Teri Kimball, come on down. Recently, the Chandler Chamber of Commerce received two prestigious awards from the Arizona Chamber Executives, a testament to the chamber's leadership in our community. The Chamber's Business Retention and Expansion Program was recognized as an Outstanding Program of the Year, and Teri Kimball was honored as the Industry Leadership Award with that. These accolades are truly deserved and reflect the exceptional work being done by you and the entire Chandler team. So, on behalf of the city, we want to extend our congratulations and the staff on these achievements. We are grateful for the strong partnership between the city and the chamber. Would you like to say anything?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I have with me several members of our Board of Directors because our programs and everything that we do would not be possible without their leadership. And I joke that we represent one hundred and seventy-two thousand employees here in Chandler with thirty-five board members. I have a lot of bosses. But it's truly an honor, and our Business Retention Expansion Program is where we are going into businesses, not only with some of our council members that are up here, as well as city staff, but it is also an opportunity to bring all of our educational partners together in one room. And I will tell you, this program has been ideal for our businesses because it's a one-stop shop, and it's really, really important. And Mayor, you're standing up here not just as a mayor, but also as part of our board, too. And I just want to say, and then there are one hundred and thirty-five chambers in the state of Arizona, and to be recognized, this was the first time they gave out awards, and we walked away with one-third of all of the awards there. So, very exciting. Chandler continues to be that role model.
I'll just say, yeah, I'm the board chair. Elaine Cruz, I just want to congratulate Teri for her leadership and thank her because she was recognized at ACE, at the Arizona Chamber Executives Conference. I was at the conference. Didn't see the award ceremony, but she was recognized by her peers, and this is all of the chambers in the state recognizing the work of our chamber and our leaders. So, congratulations, Teri.
All right, let's do a photo. Let's leave you in the middle. All right. Are we good? All right. Next, we are recognizing the two thousand and twenty-five Video Awards. If our video team can come in and with some sass and swagger, please. Our award-winning video team is at it again, this time receiving Telly Awards, and most recently, multiple Emmy nominations for their work. We are proud to announce that the city Chandler Digital Media Division has won three prestigious Telly Awards this year. I don't even want to listen to myself when you guys are coming in. This is fun. The Telly Awards are an international competition honoring excellence in video and television across all screens, and for the forty-sixth annual edition, they received over thirteen thousand entries globally. Our wins include a bronze telly for twister trackers in the sound design quality for State of the City address, a bronze telly for the courage of our city in the multi-motivational and advice category, and a silver telly for the heart of the city in advocacy and causes category. In addition, our team also received three nominations for the Rocky Mountain Emmy Awards this year, further recognizing our commitment to high-quality storytelling and production. So, thank you, and congratulations to our video team for your great work in representing Team Chandler. We all love working with you. You take our paltry efforts and turn them into gold. So, thank you. Who would like to say something?
Oh, I do, I do, I do. I'm just really proud of this team. They work really hard. They take very complicated topics and make them digestible in an entertaining way. So, I'm very excited and very proud to be part of this team. And thank you, Matt, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for being so supportive. I truly appreciate it. Thank you.
And I'm glad to see the emergence of the puffy blue jackets again. All right, let's do a photo. All right, let's scoot you guys over a little, just, come this way. There we go. All right. But wait, we have one more, Councilmember. Recognition, the two thousand and twenty-five Employees of the Year Awards. And let me turn this back to Acting City Manager, John Pombier.
Mayor, Council, I'm not sure how I top what we just witnessed, but as you know, one of the best parts about being the Acting City Manager is getting to know all the employees that do amazing work for the city day in and day out. Today, we are going to introduce and call off the names of the winners of the Employee of the Year for different departments. I ask all of them who are here, because not all of them could be here, to come down for one picture. These are the best of the best. These are the people that were voted on by their peers because of the great customer service they give day in and day out to our internal customers and to our citizens. It's these people that exemplify the Chandler way and make my job and your jobs so much more fun. So, I will start by introducing the Employee of the Year for the Police Department, Ryan Haragay. For Public Works and Utilities- For Public Works and Utilities, Gina Sylvester. For Management Services, Bernita Goldtooth. For Neighborhood Resources, Leslie Peralta. For Kappa, Stacy Sacco. Please note the wardrobe change. All right. For General Government, Danielle Shager. For Community Services, Pia Nelson. For Information Technology, Krista Mikecell. For Development Services, Taylor Kosaroff. You may want to ask, I believe Taylor wins the award for the people who come farthest to support her for this event. For Fire, Scott Anyet. And for the City Magistrate, Douglas Lukes. Mayor and Council, these are your 2025 Employees of the Year.
Council, we do have a consent item, but one of the items has been called in, and I also have a couple of comments on item number three. So Marge Zilla, come on down. This is your first presentation to us, isn't it? So, Councilmember Orlando, you got a question?
Yeah, Marge, I don't know if you're the right person for planning zoning, but I'd like to, for the education of the audience, tell us what we're doing here tonight, why we're doing it, and we'll start with that.
Mayor, Councilmember Orlando, so I'll defer to planning and zoning to go through the technical aspects, and then for any legislative components, then I'll weigh in on those. So perhaps for background, to give planning and zoning an opportunity to lay the groundwork.
Come on up.
All right, through the Mayor, Councilmember Orlando, could you repeat your question? Could you repeat your question?
Yeah. Why are we here with this particular item?
Yeah, through the Mayor, Councilmember Orlando, this was a House bill that got approved last year. It has to be approved by January 1st of 2026. It requires middle housing, which is duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes, to be approved within a mile of the city's center business district.
And I understand there is no control the city has over those?
Through the Mayor, Councilmember Orlando, that would be correct.
And so, it's not, and do we have the legislator's side of the House, why this thought process was involved with the city?
Mayor, Councilmember Orlando, so with any kind of policy proposal at the state legislature, these things aren't happening in a vacuum. You may recall, for the past few years, there have been an onslaught of proposals that threaten local decision-making. There were more widespread proposals that were stopped at the legislature, and this avenue was one that was more targeted, certainly not something proposed by the city, but more targeted in its effects on the city's zoning ability.
And I apologize, I'm suffering from a real case of allergies, so forgive me. So, I guess what I'm hearing you say, this is just one of those items where the state legislator is telling cities, at a certain size, by the way, of how they must comply with something that we, as residents, I vote on the general plan, I voted on downtown plans, and just taking control away from our residents and the council, quite frankly. Which you just heard tonight, that they could put a fourplex in the middle of a historical district, and I would venture to say, the vast majority of this one-mile radius of all of our cities, 75,000 above, I'm sure has one, maybe numerous, historical districts, because that's why they're historical districts, they're in the oldest part of the towns. Excuse me. Yeah, it is unfortunate, and we're facing this, like I said, larger cities are facing this mandate, and something I think we need to take a hard look at next year, I know you're working with the legislators, is we need to carve out the historical districts on this. We need to look at this bill, and maybe it was good intentions, I'm not going to sit here and debate the good intentions of this for housing, but there are some quirks in this bill that definitely needs to be looked at. We have very little control over what the structures are, we have very little control of painting of it, very little control of the tiling, and I think that's one of the other items on here. So, I just have a problem with our legislators just doing these mandates, in particular with historical folks that have spent a lot of money on their houses, their area, to keep the historical perspective. And I think you'll hear from some of them tonight. So, I mean, I'll, I have to move forward with this because it's state law, but I will definitely urge this council, this Mayor and Council, and you with the National League of Cities, excuse me, the League Cities Mayor, to take this, address this bill next year, and fix, and fix some of the items in here so that we are not here a year from now with all of these pop-up areas ruining our historical designated areas. The other question I have for staff is, legal more than anything else, is there are federal laws on historical designations of particular areas. Were we able to find out if some of this historical laws apply to our historical downtown? In other words, can you just go in there and start carving up an historical place?
If I may, Mayor, Councilmember Orlando, the federal designation unfortunately does not preempt the state action, which they did in this case. There are certain federal laws that apply, but they're more for funding and different things like that, but unfortunately, we did research the issue of whether the federal law could overcome the state preemption, and no, it can't. The federal laws do not go into that detail, and that's where they defer to the states.
Well, thank you for looking into that, because I know residents have called me on this one, and I know other cities are facing this challenge as well. Thank you, Mayor.
So, Marge, I've got a couple of questions and perhaps others as well. So, I somewhat, I have talked to a couple legislators probably several months ago when I first heard of this and wondered the application, and it almost seemed to, the idea seemed to catch them by surprise, is do you see at least a path that we could have conversations or others, that do you see any interest on this yet of entertaining the carving out of historical districts? First question, I have another one too.
So, Mr. Mayor, yes, this has received a lot of attention. I think that the bill itself, talking about the compatible uses and defining middle housing as compatible with the housing that exists in that area, offers the city some ability to work through what fourplexes, duplexes, or triplexes may come up in that area. And this, as you know, is counter to some of those other proposals that came through the legislature. But yes, I think those conversations will go on.
My second question is, there's also been a little bit of chatter about some neighborhoods, I'm not hearing this in Chandler, but wishing that they had the options. I suppose if the city was interested in pursuing that, you know, that's a possibility that we could pursue on a case-by-case, similar to what happened downtown before this legislation. Is there, there's nothing necessarily preventing us from, or other cities, from incorporating this in city code if there was an appetite outside of historical districts and outside of the square one miles, correct?
Mr. Mayor, absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, Marge, I think one of my biggest concerns have always been addressing housing affordability. I know that this is the attempt to address the lack of housing, the lack of middle housing, and to preempt cities to allow for that. I'm not 100% on board with state coming in and telling us how to do our business, because we do our business very well in Chandler. But I do understand that there's seniors out there, there's veterans out there, there are people who are displaced, leaving homeless, you know, situations like aging out of the foster care system. So we do have large gaps in our community, and as it comes to housing, we do need to fill that gap. And so I'm just looking at this particular thing and looking at how they're trying to tell us how to do our business, but I do recognize that there is a need for this type of housing. How do we navigate this process while still supporting the needs of our community in addressing housing affordability? Will this help do that, or are you thinking, what's your thoughts on around housing affordability as it pertains to the middle housing?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Harris, based on the council action, we'll see how this kind of comes out in practice, but certainly, I think anyone who is in the depth of this policy area would say there are a multitude of factors that weigh in on it.
And then I guess my last thought is the preservation of our historic districts. I think that's important. You know, this building has been there for 50 years, the living, the ideal of what that district becomes, it's important for us to keep that preserved for what that's supposed to be, and I'm concerned, so please keep us updated on where we are with that, make sure our community are getting those updates, so we can see the progress of this, and then please bring it to our attention, the first housing development that does potentially come in that area, so we can look at that. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Harris, those will go through the standard city process as well, so the process itself would not be preempted, so you would see that through that process.
Councilmember Orlando? Thank you, Mayor. I apologize again, what's the penalty if we don't comply with this?
I was gonna say, Councilmember, I'll defer to the city attorney, but...
Well, one of the, if I may, Mayor, Councilmember Orlando, one of the biggest penalties is we have some authority to define the areas where these can go. If we don't adopt that, then they're going to be able to go citywide. So, that to me is probably, by adopting this tonight, it allows the city to keep as much control as we can under the state preemption.
That's the only reason why I answered that question, it's fair to ask the question, what if we don't comply? So, thanks.
Any questions for Marge, Kevin, Planning? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Marge.
I do have two cards on this area. Call them in the order I have them. Julia Palazi. Julia, you have three minutes, state your name and address, and when the light turns yellow, if you're not done, that means start to wrap up.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council, for giving me some time. I am a resident of Silk Stalking Historic Neighborhood, there's five of us here. I'm going to read you a letter written by another Silk Stalking resident that kind of sums up, I think, what we all feel, are definitely concerned about preserving the history. This is from Yvette Cook, my neighbor. Dear Mayor and members of the city council, I'm writing as a resident and homeowner in the Silk Stalking Neighborhood Historic District to express my strong opposition to ordinance number 5141, which proposes establishing a middle housing overlay district allowing duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and townhomes on all single-family residential lots within one mile of Chandler's central business district. This proposal stands in direct contradiction to the historic preservation district overlay that the city council adopted in April 2024 for a portion of the Silk Stalking Neighborhood District. That overlay was the result of a years-long, community-driven effort led by Silk Stalking residents in partnership with the city's Planning Division, the Historic Preservation Commission, and the city council itself. The purpose of the HP overlay is to preserve in the architectural integrity, visual harmony, and historic significance of one of Chandler's most cherished neighborhoods. The Silk Stalking Neighborhood Historic District is deeply tied to Chandler's history. Many homes here represent early ranch, craftsmen, and Spanish colonial revival styles, and several were once owned by families central to Chandler's early growth, including the Bashah, Bogal, and Serrano families. Notably, Arthur Price, Chandler's first city attorney and personal friend of Dr. Chandler, also resided here. These homes and their setting collectively tell the story of Chandler's formative years. I'm going to wrap up a little bit, because I know I'm getting low on time, but as a resident of this neighborhood for 13 years, we've worked so hard with Dorothy Ruhoff, who recently passed, Mary Lou Perkins, who's 93, spent decades getting this historic designation and getting this overlay with your support and your help. I appreciate hearing your support tonight for it, and hope that there is some way we can protect our historic neighborhoods, Silk Stalking and others, and I appreciate your time for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you. Other speaker card, Melissa, I can't hear you, right in the middle of tech.
It's Lollipop.
That works, all right.
It's Melissa.
Melissa, state your name and address, you have up to three minutes to share your thoughts.
It's Melissa Lolich.
Thank you.
265 North Colorado Street, two blocks from here in Silk Stalking. You know, I'm not as prepared as I normally like to be, to be perfectly honest, so that's my disclaimer, but I heard today at 12:00 that this was coming up, and so I didn't realize that this other bill, 24, or 2721, passed in '24, and it was a done deal. So I did some quick research, and basically, this came out of the housing situation, and I think we all agree, it needs to improve, and I don't think there's anyone opposed to that. The problem I have with this is it seems, and I'm willing to be corrected at any time, but it seems that this bill to increase housing, middle housing, is being done at the expense of historic housing. That's my issue. And I say that because, first of all, this was narrowed down to a one-mile radius of the city district, the downtown, there's actually a term for it, but I wonder, well, why is it down, you know, why is this specific to one mile around downtown? And it looks like the League of Arizona Cities and Towns is the one that lobbied for it, whereas the two initial senators who proposed this really didn't care, they wanted it citywide. But as it stands, it's within a one-mile radius. Well, guess what's within a one-mile radius of any downtown, your historic areas, right? That's how they developed. So, the big thing on this bill, which again, I looked up really quickly, and it was nice and short, was that they didn't want anyone to really stunt the progress of erecting was that they didn't want anyone to really stunt the progress of erecting duplexes, triplexes, and, and quads, for lack of a better word. And so their work around that is to sell this point. And there's a lot of good reasons to have this, but not in a historic district. Because once you erect those, you've disturbed the whole flavor. Those things did not exist. Where's that yellow light, right here? Sorry. Am I still green?
You're green.
Okay.
Now you're yellow.
Damn. All right, I'll hurry. I see it now. As soon as you put these other structures in, you've, to me, destroyed pretty, if, if they go up, they go high, high-rise? You know, you've destroyed the whole flavor of the historic neighborhood, okay? Because we have one now that's big and blue, and it's huge, and it, it just sticks out. It's not in our Silk Stalking, it's on the next street over, but you could still see it a mile away.
Thank you, Melissa.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Encinas.
Thank you, Mayor. This question might be for a city attorney or for Marge. I need a little bit of clarification, because when we reviewed this, I was under a different understanding, but the city manager, or I'm sorry, the city attorney just kind of mentioned the, the boundaries of the Central Business District. How is that defined? Is that defined by the number of businesses, the number of population? What may that be? Because I just heard you mention that, you said, "We, as a city, chose the district." So if we can get some more clarification on that.
And if I may, Mayor, I'm going to defer to planning staff. And again, we chose it within the confines of the law.
So to the Mayor, Councilmember Encinas, the Central Business District was already approved through resolution in previous years, I believe in 2019. So that's what we had gone off of.
Okay, is that based like off of our former general plan, or what, what was that based off of?
I'm not too sure where that came from, but I just know that it was approved through resolution in 2019.
Okay, and did we, do we feel like it's, we're just basically going on that? Or is there anything more that we can figure out that's more appropriate? Is this the correct place for the Central Business District?
To the Mayor, Councilmember Encinas, the bill does state within the downtown area, and the Central Business District does kind of encompass that area, so we felt it was pretty appropriate.
Okay, so the actual bill says the downtown?
Um, it says Central Business District.
Okay, so that's where I'm feeling I need more, some more clarification on how that's being defined.
Mayor.
Are you done?
Yes.
All right. Councilmember Harris.
Mayor, I kind of feel the same way, too, that we probably, as a council, we need to kind of define that, look at that a little bit more closely, and maybe even table this item till we get that resolution of the, of what that district is. How do we decide? I wasn't on council in 2019 when that was being made. I think it's only right for me to look at the map that I'm saying yes to, so that way, because we have a lot of different business districts in Chandler, west, north, you could pick a side. We have a lot, so I kind of would like to table it and ask the acting city manager if he can get back with us to give us the districting map, and then that way I can look at it and understand what it is before I say yes to this particular item, because that's tied to this particular item.
Kevin Mayo.
Mayor, Council, so the Central Business District was created for a totally different purpose. It is not, had nothing to do with this. It was created for funding mechanism, federal funding mechanisms, and different, a whole host of different things. It exists for purposes, economic development, downtown redevelopment, those type of things. In terms of tabling it, the, the state bill gave us a, a short shot clock on this. And based on the two meetings in November and the two meetings in December, if we table this to a December meeting, we won't, it won't become effective until after the effective date when we have to have it effective by. If we don't have it effective by that date, then this state bill applies citywide. It just defaults to citywide unless this is adopted in November.
Mayor. Councilmember.
And we can, I mean, we can do special meetings to get through that process, but I think it would be, it would, it would be not, you know, not pursuant, or, or in our best interests to say yes to, we're not saying no to what is already being preemptive to the state, but what we are saying is that what we have control of, which is this business, defined business district, we have control of that, we need to be able to look at that ourselves, because I have control over that. And I've never looked at that, I've never considered, I never considered that at the lens in which we're talking now. And now that this element is there, I would like to be able to consider that at the lens of what we're talking about now, so I can see how that works in conjunction, because we owe that to our residents, and we owe that to ourselves to know exactly what we're defining here. And if we need to do additional special meetings in order to move this forward, that's fine. I want to do that type of work, because I think that's important for our residents. And then if we need a way in, we can do that as well. Thanks, Mayor.
City Attorney, part of what's at risk here, too, other than that, is state shared revenues, am I correct?
If I may, Mayor, that is my understanding. Also, the Central Business District that was created statutorily, it goes through a process. We would not have time to change that within the timeframe we have before the law goes into effect on January 1st. And changing that at this point could affect some funding. I don't know, because it, it deals with slum and blighted areas, it deals with different tax rebate programs. I, I can't tell you here what all it would be impacted in our Central Business District. What I can say is it's a process to change that, and we would not have time to change it before January 1st. So there are some real risks of continuing this item, both from having it have a broader application and potentially, and I'm looking at the law real quickly, and I apologize, potentially it could impact state grants or state shared revenues.
Council, I think, again, right, you, whatever we do here, I still think a good foot forward is, I think there is an appetite in the legislature. I don't think it was their intention to go after historic districts. I think they were thinking a thought of in areas, and this is the area where there was the economic development incentives for, for building things that I, I remember having a conversation with you actually years ago. I didn't know it was called that, but it was the, the E, it had a E in the, like a four-letter thing. I don't know what the word is, I'm looking for. What's that?
EMSD.
Yeah.
Municipal Service District.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I, I know that it, it's prescribed beyond, we had a say in that, but that, in its way, incentivized different interest rates on that. So I, I don't think that that's necessarily a path that we're going to be able to clawback, because that was a federal designation, not a state designation on that. But I, Council, I just, I'm, I'm not willing to risk state shared revenues or, or broad application. I am quite interested in, in working with legislatures. As I mentioned, I've talked to a couple. I think there's an appetite to, to pull historic districts out. I, I don't think it was their intention. I just think that's kind of where the area falls. But we get to a vote, I, I guess we'll see. But I, I, I don't know even what the, what's the timeline if, do we have for a day? What do we have, a month? What's the time where this has to be for second reading?
If I may, Mayor, we need to have it effective by January 1st. So after the second read, it's 30 days for the ordinance goes into effect, and that's why it's on tonight for action and Thursday night. Also, just fortunately, Kim Moyers provided a little more information. The Central Business District was adopted back in 2012, and it provided ways to provide economic incentives through tax rebates, tax rebate incentives. The giblets, all would be impacted by changing the Central Business District.
Yep.
Yeah.
Mayor.
Councilmember.
I, I just, I understand that, and I kind of feel like, if, if, I understand where, where we at, and we're talking about the first of the year. And I understand that even if we went over the first of the year a few, by a few days or whatever, it's not making a, it's not, you know, there's not a building or something being built at that time or something that's creating that preempt, that preempt. I really just, I, I really just want to make sure that, knowing this part of the information, it just totally makes me feel uncomfortable. I feel like we just really have to, not that I'm saying that it probably won't go through, but I really need to have that extra information to help me consider or get there and to make sure that we're being responsible. And we can understand, like, this, we have neighbors here right now that's like, hey, this is going to impact my district, you know, and I don't even know what that even looks like. And so I kind of want to be able to consider that, and even the tabling of it, or even if staff can work with those that want to work to get this taken care of by Thursday, that's great, too. I'm willing to put in that work. But I really need to see what we're talking about, because I don't know, I, I don't even have a visual of what we're even talking about. And I feel like I'm doing my job halfway if I'm saying yes to the state, but I'm saying there's something that's there that I have control over. I'm going to look at what I got control over, and I want to make a decision based on what I have a, a control over. And I feel like I don't have that information tonight, nor was it provided to me. And I, I didn't know that it was tied to something like this, and this is new information I'm learning in this moment. So that's why it's our, rather table, or we can work through that with this acting city manager, and attorney can get back with me.
Councilmember Harris, I don't think it's a question of when things go on the property. It's, it's a mandated date, which means, and there's a 30 days of curing. So we have to do something, and this council still has passed second reads, so there is, there is another. But by the end of this month, this, this is, I, I don't know if we're going to gain any wisdom between now and then. So I, I mean, you could, I, I'd like to hear what these guys have to say. And, and, you know, if you want to make a, a motion to, to delay this, I just, I won't be voting yes on that just because I, I think my sensibilities say this is one that I'd rather work with the product, but I don't think I have the ability to delay this in my mind.
If, Mayor, we do, if we, let's say we went down the path and say, hey, we did a yes vote on this particular thing. Is that the districting in terms of the, the actual district? If I said, yes, we got to put this into law, but if I went back and said, hey, I want to work and look at these districts from a council perspective, does that still carry the movement of not impacting our neighbors or putting ourselves in the best position, so that way?
So do you mean like historic districts or the Central Business District?
Well, whichever district that I, whichever maps I have control over, being able to bring it back to council to make a decision about what that looks like.
Kelly, I'm going to defer to you for his question.
And that's what I'm looking at, Mayor. Could, potentially, and I don't have the answer here, because I don't think it's addressed specifically in the law, Mayor, is if we change the Central Business District after this goes into effect, could, would it change the boundaries? And we can look at that, but I can't give you that answer tonight. The answer I can give you tonight, and the one that is, again, a risk for the council to evaluate, is the law is very clear, the, the new law, it says, "If a municipality does not adopt the regulations required by this section on or before January 1st, 2026, middle housing shall be allowed on all lots in the municipality zone for single-family residential use without any limitations." So that is the risk. We, I'm happy to try and look at the issue of can we change the Central Business District and have it affect this after adoption. We will look at that this week and try to have an answer to the council before Thursday night. But, but that is the real risk of not having this law go into effect on January 1st.
Yeah. Councilmember Poston.
Mayor, just in, in my personal opinion, I think there's too much at risk to not vote yes on this this evening. I do, I, I sort of will be voting yes in protest, but I would like to encourage our city, acting city manager, to talk to our lobbyists, we have a few of them, to try and see if we can get some sort of resolution that still protects those historic communities. I don't want to make this, this particular issue spread across the entire city. I don't think we have the time. Our backs are up against a wall. I, I don't want to vote yes, but I do want to protect the city as best we can. I would like to keep looking into this. I think this is another excellent example of why local control is so important. I think there are a lot of unintended consequences to actions like this by our state legislature when they start playing in Chandler's sandbox. Is, I think we and our residents know what's best for our community. It's devastating. I was here back in the days of Dorothy Ruoff, when she was working to get the Silk Stalking District, and she worked so hard for this. And this is, this is, this is awful. So we need to get it done. We need to get a resolution in the state legislature. I look to our mayor, who has, you know, those good relationships, our acting city manager, and our lobbyist to work on that immediately. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, if.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor, sorry. I, I want what Kelly can look into. I might be standing on business in terms of what I know versus what I don't know. I want to always make educated votes, and I always have to be able to explain my vote. I feel like I'm impartial information right now. And although there is additional things that could be, and I, I feel like we are, our backs are against the wall on, on this particular issue, but, but I, I do think that we can slide in some additional meetings if we need to, to have those additional conversations. But I, I would like to look at those maps, regardless of how council votes and focus on the historic district, and making sure that we're getting ourselves away from that area, so that we can bring forward. That's kind of what I'm bringing forward.
So, Councilmember, again, this is maybe one of the opportunities where a second read will serve us best. I would recommend that we, we pass this. You can answer questions to us by Thursday. And then if we want to push that second meeting back, there still might be a window, but I would strongly recommend that we get this out of the way, because there is a required two readings, that we still have an option before this would go into effect at the end of this month. If our questions are not all answered by Thursday, so that would be.
So would that be the direction that you'll be giving staff to look at the districting map and bring some of that answer back? If I vote yes on this, then staff direction is to bring us back options or focus areas for the districting map?
I, I think they can answer any questions that we might have. But if your question is, are they going to give us a pathway to change those? I, I'm not counting on that in the short term, but I think there is some information that if you have specific questions, they can deliver, they can deliver that to us on Thursday, which is now the set second read of this.
Mayor, if I could jump in really quick.
Kevin.
So if the question is, could we change the boundaries of the Central Business District in a way that we would be able to pull the implication of this one-mile radius? We'd have to move the Central Business District west of Alma School for it to not then reach Silk Stockings. There is no way to shrink it and reconfigure it in a way that would protect Silk Stockings as is defined in the state law right now. And we've got too many things, I think, that we've leveraged because of that Central Business District, that we couldn't collapse it down, based on the other things we have done historically over the last 13 years. But I don't think that it could be adjusted in a way that would, would protect that. I think our best efforts are to work with the state to try to, in the next session, exempt the historic districts.
And Mayor, Councilmember Harris, much as we believe the state legislature may have missed the unintended consequences on historical districts, I'm not going to be here Thursday night, but I will tell you, I'm very hesitant to have any suggestions by staff come forward, because we will not have time to look at what the unintended consequences we would have on our Central Business District if we tried to move it, and anything, any programs or anything we had in that area. I would hate to have unintended consequences based on our action. So I believe we can look to get the answer of, could we change it after the fact? But then I would recommend that would be a process. And while that's going on, I will talk to government relations about, is there any, any movement to exempt historical districts from this? Because that would provide the easiest exception to this. But I want to make sure that I'm giving you the advice not to avoid, not to create unintended consequences there are.
Smart. Mayor, I just think that, I understand, but my symbolic no vote would be more so standing on the business that I disapprove of what was brought to us in a sense that created this energy with our neighbors, because we have to be about our residents and about the business. So my no vote is for Chandler and my dis, and, and my vote to say stay, stayed out, stay out of our business. And if you want to have a conversation, come see me. Thanks, Mayor.
Mayor. Councilmember Orlando. Yeah, I. You ready to make a motion?
I am ready to make a motion. Let me find my paperwork here.
1 through 4.
Yes. Propose a motion to move the consent agenda November 10th, 2025, regular meeting device 1 through 4, with the change we have in front of. With the change we have in front of us, city attorney, is that correct? We have to read that in the immediate motion.
Yes, the change in front of you that changes the number of two households living independent from each other to four households living independent of each other in exhibit A.
Thank you for reading that. I don't think I would have made it. So with the addendum on November tenth and what she said.
Motion second by vice mayor. That's, I think we kind of talked through this position. Did you want to?
I'm going to be dissenting.
So you're voting no on item number three?
That's correct.
Mayor, for the record, I'll be voting no on item number three as well.
Motion carries unanimously with the except items one, two, and four. Item three passes by majority.
Thank you. That concludes our regular council meeting. Welcome to the November ten, twenty twenty five study session. I would like to call this meeting to order. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor Hartke.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
Yeah.
Councilmember Encinas.
Here.
Councilmember Poston.
Here.
Councilmember Orlando.
Trying to be here.
Councilmember Harris.
I'm still here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. We've had a number of items that have been called in. So staff, we'll just go through them. Item one and two by councilmember Orlando, a staff presentation on the issuance and sales of bonds. Matt Dumdor.
Good evening, mayor and council. Glad to be here to talk through some bond sales that we have planned. I did realize that I should have worn a puffy blue jacket and a cowboy hat to be well accepted. That seems to be the going criteria, so. Let me get the right presentation. Hold on a second. All right. So before you tonight, we have some bond issuances, both general obligation bonds and excise tax revenue obligations. Of course, keeping in mind that bonds fund a majority of projects in our capital improvement program. Just over seventy percent rely on bonds in our capital program. And this bond funding allows us to build and construct a lot of different amenities for our residents. Both fire and police apparatus and improvements to their technology, their buildings, our streets and intersections, facilities and parks. So we have a lot that rides on these bonds. From an excise tax revenue obligation perspective, resolution before you tonight, fifty nine forty six authorizes the sale not to exceed two hundred and five million of E T R O bonds, series twenty twenty six. The pledged repayment is excise tax revenues. However, utility revenues generated from ratepayers will be used to fund the debt service on these bonds. There's some example projects here that will be utilizing this bond funding, including water treatment plant improvements, water main replacements, water production facility improvements, sewer assessment and rehabilitation programs, water reclamation facility improvements, and the sand tan freeway redundant sixty six inch line for our sewer. These are for projects that have already begun and also projects that will begin this year that will be utilizing this bond funding. From a general obligation bond perspective, resolution fifty nine forty seven authorizes the sale not to exceed of a hundred and seventy five million of G O bonds, series twenty twenty six. The pledged repayment is secondary property taxes for our general obligation bonds. This sale will not impact the secondary tax rate, remaining flat at eighty seven cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. The sale also uses remaining authorization from prior bond elections for public improvements previously approved by Chandler voters. Does not use any of the recently passed additional authorization to which we thank our voters and residents of Chandler for providing additional authorization for us to continue our capital improvements and programs. Some of the projects that will be utilizing this funding include the railroad, Dobson Road intersection, Kyrene Road from Chandler Boulevard to Queen Creek, Alma School Road from Jermaine to Queen Creek, Masque Grove Park, traffic management center improvements, the forensic services facility for a police department, and existing sitting building renovations and repairs. So again, mayor and council, free consideration tonight, two resolutions, number fifty nine forty six to authorize to sell an amount not to exceed two hundred and five million of E T R O bonds and resolution fifty nine forty seven authorization to sell an amount not to exceed of a hundred and seventy five million of G O bonds. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Matt. Councilmember Orlando.
And not so much questions. Matt, thank you very much for bringing this forward. Thanks to the residents for voting a new set of bonds. And there's a lot of great projects here that are finally coming fruition, expansion of roads, freeways, parks, so the forensic facility. So, and I think the key word there is no tax rate increase. So we certainly appreciate that. So let's get those things. So when are you selling them? Next year?
They'll be sold in January. So we go through our rating, be rerated over the month of December and then we'll sell them in January.
What do you think the rates will be roughly? I know it's competitive, but what do we think?
Yeah, we're, we're anticipating, I'm gonna look to Bill Davis. We're hoping for like a three point six was kind of our target that we're shooting for. And you know, if I had my druthers that come in at two point six, but we'll see what actually comes in.
All right. So you're gonna buy all the bonds, make sure it's two point six.
Yep.
All right, make sure. Thank you, mayor.
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you. Next item called in by councilmember Orlando, item number five, the I G A with Regional Public Transportation Authority. Jason Crampton.
Thank you, mayor.
Jason, you don't need to go through the whole presentation, but this is just our normal route, normal process every year. We go through R P T. I guess the one question we were talking about this or in the briefing sheet, expansion of the routes. What type of discussion? Now, again, I don't want to say expectations here, but it's important to know that potentially there's expansion routes. And how would we, our residents participate in that process?
Yes, through the mayor, councilmember Orlando, thank you for the question. So we, we have a long history of route planning in the region. And we have routes that have kind of been programmed for many years. So we're looking at hopefully being able to implement some enhancements to our bus routes with the, with, with the start of proposition four seventy nine and the new regional funding for, for transit. So you know, we, we have information on our website, Chandleraz.gov slash transit. Residents can, can go there. They can contact our staff and find that contact information there. And, and definitely resident feedback is welcomed. In addition to resident feedback, when considering enhancements to bus service, we look at things like demographics, land use density, activity centers, and, and just the overall connection to the existing transit network to really identify what types of enhancements work best to our, our public transit network.
All right, good. I think we, let's get some more advertisement on that so people could weigh in. I really appreciate that. And I want to thank you and your staff. Periodically, we do get comments from the service. And then of course, we've got a few where I know a couple of residents were missing buses and the time schedule is off. And your staff contacted them right away and I think they fixed that problem. So thank you very much. These are the type of stuff that irritates some residents, in particularly if they're working, you gotta be in downtown Phoenix. And you're supposed to be here at a certain time and you're not there. So thank you for fixing those problems. Certainly appreciate it.
Thank you for that.
No additional questions. Item number seven, did you call and get your answer for this one or not? Item number seven, rezoning of Tumbleweed Estates. Taylor Madaman Planner. Councilmember Orlando.
Hi Taylor, thank you, mayor. Will these be for sale or rentals or we don't know yet?
Through the mayor, councilmember Orlando, the intention is that these will be for sale.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it.
Okay.
That was easy.
Item number twenty, councilmember Orlando and councilmember Poston having relating to public outreach question on the Trophy Sports Bar, Darcy Smith. Go ahead.
Through the mayor, councilmember Orlando, Trophy Bar is in the process of getting an use permit for a series six bar license as well as an entertainment use permit for live entertainment.
Yes, sorry. So the question I have is obviously we're getting some residents input. I know they're doing a Zoom meeting and they're not happy with that. I don't know if we could get with the applicant and see if they could be a more one-on-one interchange or exchange. So hopefully we, I think I talked with Kevin Mayo there about that. So hopefully you guys could follow up and see if that, that makes it a little bit less. It's a more personable, if you want to be a good neighbor, you first, let's not go through video when you could probably do something in your own place. So hopefully they'll, they'll heed that. The second question I have is, I know they have different issues going on, the expansion and liquor license. Why can't this liquor license come before us at the same time we work on agreement with them for the expansion and the other issues?
Yeah, through the mayor, councilmember Orlando, our tax and license division has a certain shot clock of sixty days with the state level. And the timing that we got the use permit for Trophy Bar was slightly behind that. So they did have to move forward before us.
And just to clarify, series six is because they're selling more liquor than food versus the old one, they had twelve, which was food, a percentage of food over liquor, right?
Through the mayor, that would be correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Poston, do you have any additional questions?
Line rates, so thank you.
Okay, any additional? All right, council, those are, all of those have been called in. We will see you all on Thursday. Thank you, audience, for hanging with us. Have a good evening.
Mayor.
I'm not done yet. Thank you, thank you. There you go. Turn my pages. Take it, I'm ungaveling. All right, item number thirty two, city relief measures related to federal government shutdown is requested by councilmember Harris. Councilmember, sorry for that.
No, no worries. Thank you, mayor. I wanted to bring this forward because as you guys know, that the government has been on shutdown and it's been quite a feat for us locally. And the impacts have been directly impact, we have been directly impacted, the implications of it staying longer, which I'm hearing that they're gonna open back up. It really has been very passionate from the employees that have been furloughed, furloughed. The federal employees and to the contractors as well as into evictions and utility assistance that's desperately needed so bad for so many people, especially Chandler residents. I wanted to make sure that the people of Chandler know that we're listening, we're hearing. And I wanted to give staff direction, not as a council, for them to look into options that can help support our, our residents during this time, not limiting to tapping into reserve funds, understanding what's happening. And I really wanted to make sure that we have, that they have the tools that they need when we leave this meeting today to act and act quick, quickly and swiftly on behalf of the residents of Chandler. So I wanted to be able to have this discussion with my colleagues so that way we can stand on business and making sure that our residents are being heard, especially our veterans, our seniors, our displaced, unsheltered, all those things. And I wanted to kick it over to the city acting city manager to, to talk about where we could be at right now. I know that they've been working very hard. I know Jane has been working hard as part of the effort in terms of the food. So I kind of want to know, where are we now? What do you think we need to be doing at this point after being in this government shutdown?
Mayor, councilmember Harris, first off, I think food, as you noted, is the biggest need right now. Our food banks are telling us that they're still going to need food, even if the shutdown ends in the next week or so. So we will continue to work with the agencies within our community that provide food and make sure that when necessary, we're reaching out to all of our resources to help them have the food they need as we move into a holiday period, which is normally a high time for food as it is under normal circumstances. As to the rest, the neighborhood resources staff has been working diligently to make sure we are reaching out to all of our partners in the community to see where they see potential needs. So the direction that, with your guidance that I will give to them is we need to monitor eviction rates and make sure we're staying on top of that. And if we see a need, have a plan to react quickly. We need to be monitoring, monitoring things like that, that we can react to quickly if it comes of need. If the shutdown ends in the next week and we avoid some of those things, great. But if not, are we with our community partners and are we addressing any of the needs we are going to see in our community? Food, eviction, utility rates, all of those things are things we will monitor to make sure that the shutdown does affect, does not affect our community members any more than it needs to.
Yeah, and I wanted to make sure that mayor and council, that, that we stand on business, that we're not putting too much red tape in front of the need that's needed there and making sure that our acting city manager is able to execute from an administrative perspective to make sure those concerns are being readily actively addressed as needed in our community.
Mayor, councilmember Harris, I think we're in a great spot right now. Staff heard you loud and clear earlier in the week. They've got a whole list of things ready to go. The only thing holding them back right now has been me saying, hey, let's see where the actual need is before we spread it out. I want to make sure that we are using our resources where they will be the most impactful in our community. And by doing that, we can have the most impact. So staff is ready to go. I mean, Ryan's sitting over there. She's ready to get up here and give you a whole dossier of things she's ready to do. But it has been a long night. So let me assure you that staff has taken with a sense of urgency your request. And we will monitor it through our community groups and be ready to go and provide you with solutions, not questions, if the need arises in the next few weeks.
Thank you. And I just wanted to make sure that along with mayor and council that's here that they can hear that direction and that everyone is okay with the direction of the city manager. You know, looking at the need and, and getting back with us and letting us know what the needs are and acting swiftly if there are urgent concerns in our community.
Just very quickly, one, I wanted to say thank you, councilmember Harris, for bringing this idea forward. And if there are opportunities, I'm, I'm guessing there are going to be people out there that this is a first time issue for them. And so I know there has to be a process, but if there's something that we can do, again, to kind of reiterate and support what you said, if there's anything we can do to help clear some of that process, if you need us to, please bring that back to us.
Mayor, councilwoman Poston, one of the things we've been very clear with staff is as they're reaching out to their community partners is to have these pipelines set up. Eliminate as much red tape as on our side as we possibly can so that if we see the need, we can get the approval from you to send them the money necessary to get our community where it needs to be. We definitely do not want to be part of this problem.
Thank you. Thanks, mayor.
Nice, mayor.
Thank you. And as I've spoken with you, the faith community is already deployed quite a bit involved. And then being on the board for Midwest Food Bank, we can bring truck, I mean, load of food here by the pallets. So if we need to make sure that those partners are funneled with what they need. And Ryan is in good communication with the Ms. Mary Lee and the team, so they know what your needs are. And they're just waiting for the go ahead from you to be able to bring that there. By the time we amass whatever it is that we're already talking about getting, food will already be given to you for you to distribute to the big distributors and then going into people's homes. And then the rest will come and then fill in the gap. So appreciate everything that you guys are doing over at the Neighborhood Services. Thank you.
And I guess something I'd like to say is ask Marge or Strategic Initiatives Government Liaison is obviously things are a moving target now in DC related to the shutdown, related to snap food, et cetera. That, that if you could just keep us in, I don't need a statement now, but just make sure that we are up to date with this information that will help us make decisions and, and kind of digest the latest what's going on related to timelines and not just what we see in the news. So to me, I think that would be valuable for us in best understanding where we can put resources. And I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to, none of us wants to dedicate resources to something and then find out that, that resources is not a need there. and I don't want to, I don't want to, none of us wants to dedicate resources to something and then find out that that resources is not a need there. So if you could keep us very abreast of what's going on, that would be helpful. Council, anything else? Councilmember Harris, final word on this?
Yeah, thank you again. Staff has been working nonstop. I know I've been posting on social media and talking to the community at large and making sure that I want our Chandler residents to know we're standing on business here. We see you. We know that is a tough time and we want to make sure the holidays is easier for you to navigate this season. No one should be choosing between rent and buying food or or utilities and and and, you know, their rent payment. We need to make sure that there is funding available. We need to make sure that our residents are taken care of and making sure that, you know, evictions are not being the downside and making sure that we have staff resources working, ready, ears, ears, ears to the ground, hands, you know, hands ready to make movement. This means everything to our community and I think city manager has the direction from city council and and I and I know that he will make sure that he acts according to what we've requested. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mayor and Council for supporting this discussion and this support that we're going to give back out to our community.
Thank you. All right, am I done now? City clerk. This concludes our meeting. Thank you.